Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us for our Monday, October 7th, 7:00 PM Selectmen's Meeting. Would everyone please join in me and the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
My Pledge of Allegiance is as follows. In the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just a few announcements tonight. I want to thank, thank you to all who attended this Centennial Celebration Kickoff Event. Just a reminder that the purpose for this event was primarily to bring awareness of the town's upcoming 100th anniversary in 2016, and to officially kick off the fundraising that will occur over the next couple of years. We hope you will continue to support the Centennial Celebration Committee as they plan the festivities in 2016. The winners of the Scarecrow Contest were tied for first place was the St. Lawrence family and the Crenshaw family. Second place was Tommy Cunningham. The winners of the Coloring Contest were age four to six was Tommy Cunningham. Age seven through nine was Isabel Hilditch. Age 10 through 12 was Katie Anderson. The winners may pick up their prizes at the Town Hall Monday through Thursday from 9:00 to 1:00, or Wednesday, 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And congratulations to all the winners. Millville Cultural Council would like to invite the public to come with their applications or application questions to the council, to the council's meeting to be held on Wednesday, October 9th, at 6:30 PM in the Town Hall. During this time, they will, they will accept applications for the upcoming grant, grant cycle and be, and be happy to answer questions people may have about completing their applications. Available funds and funding priorities. Additionally, they, they would like to remind folks that in order to apply for Millville Cultural Council grant, applications must be postmarked no later than October 15th, which is about eight days from today. So, reminder that the Town, Town Hall offices will be closed Monday, October 14th in observance of Columbus Day. And one more reminder that the coffee with Selectmen has been rescheduled for Saturday morning, October 26th, from 9:00 to 11:00 AM at the Chestnut Hill Community Center. And please stop and, and visit the board. We have approval of minutes and warrants for September 16th, 2013, at 7:00 PM. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I do have warrants this evening. First is the payroll warrant for the period ending October 5th, 2013, in the amount of Next is the vendor warrant dated October 7th, 2013, in the amount of $80,601.58. And you'll see that's a little higher than normal because the $55,000 transfer from free cash to stabilization that was voted at the town meeting is on this warrant.
Okay.
And lastly, the payroll deductions for September 23rd, 2013, in the amount of
Motion to accept is read.
Motion.
For second. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have reports of town officials. The BMRSD Committee, the Blackstone Millville School, was on the agenda for this evening. Unfortunately, they had to cancel out today at the last moment. And next, we have the Parks and Rec.
They did confirm they would be here, so...
I see the chief's car outside.
He's upstairs at a planning board meeting.
Okay. All right, well, we'll table through the meeting if they happen to come in. First, public forum. Correspondence, I have none myself. Anybody else?
The only piece, Mr. Chair, that I'd like to point out was the email from the Chairman of the Blackstone Millville Regional School Committee. What they indicated was that they're putting an ad hoc committee together for the FY15 budget discussions, and they were looking for one member of both the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee from Millville to take part in this ad hoc committee. So, I would, I told him I would get back to him with the board's election of that individual from this board. Is there, are there any takers on that?
You know, if no one's interested, I'll take it. If someone's interested, I'll do it as an alternate.
Is there a motion to elect Mr. Reposa as the ad hoc representative?
I'll make a motion to accept Joe as a part.
You good with it, Joe?
I am.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, Joe.
Joe, if, um, I, I did check my calendar. I am open on those Thursdays. Those are my alternating weeks from Brownies. So, if for some reason you can't go, I can fill in your spot.
You want to involve Jennifer as an alternate?
Sure.
Okay. There a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Chair.
And on the 24th, are we all going to that one?
Does the school committee mean?
Mm-hmm.
I will be.
The BOS, the Finance, yes, because you'll have to post that.
Yes, I will post that, and it was actually on my report later this evening, but I did hear back from the Chairman of the School Committee that he will authorize us to include on that agenda the list of outstanding items the board wanted to address with respect to the elementary school.
And that meeting is 7:00?
It is.
It is.
At the Hartnett Middle School.
Because it doesn't say anything.
And Chief Landry did mention that he does have a meeting upstairs, so if we got to the appointments, if you could just table it until he, he comes down. He said he'd come down as soon as he could.
Okay. I'll do. Okay, so next, we have an appointment for Centennial Celebration.
I'll make a motion to appoint Jackie Lima in the Centennial.
All second now.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you, Jackie, and her term will be through June 30th of 2014. Thank you, Jackie, and glad you're coming back, giving us all your free time. Next, we have tabled the Police Department until Chief comes down, so Executive Secretary's report.
As you all remember, in past years, either at this meeting or the board's next meeting, we would have had the all-board meeting where all the boards came in at once and did their five-minute presentations. Last year, it was decided to try something a little different and try to schedule a couple of boards for each meeting. So, I just wanted to follow up now that we've been through one year. We've only had, believe it or not, maybe a 60% response. Oftentimes, we've been able to schedule them, but they, they never came. So, I didn't know if the board wanted to continue this way, or if you wanted to hold off on doing the, the meeting schedules and just wait until next October at this point to schedule an all-board meeting.
Do you think when we have them come in, because some of them just submit a formal written thing, do you think that the participation is about the same?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I don't think there was any benefit to the way we've been doing it for the past year. I think that was the intent, was that we would be able to give each of them more time, but I don't think they really wanted it.
All right, but on the, in the long run, because I think Jennifer's other objective was that, and also to eliminate that marathon night.
Yeah, true. I mean, if they want to come and have an open dialogue, we've, we've got a spot for them. I mean, that, that marathon night, I don't think proves anything.
No, what happens is everybody gets tired and punchy.
It's too long.
And, and that, that evening has shaped differently over the years, because when I first was on, there was maybe two or three topic items. I mean, we're talking late 90s, and we invited all the boards in to talk about, you know, budget, or talk about, you know, what's the next step for Millville. And it was just an open-air discussion of various topics, not just the report of the boards. So, I think it's shaped differently over the years. I like having them two at a meeting to give us updates to if they want to come. And some departments have sat here longer than five minutes, some have been three minutes. So, I like giving them that time and our undivided attention, because honestly, by the time we get to the end of that meeting, I don't hear anything. You know, they say you hear the first 20 minutes, the last 20 minutes.
Yeah.
Well, that's like a two-and-a-half hour meeting, so there's a lot of stuff in between you miss. I like, I, I currently like the way we're doing it now.
It's okay.
Just my opinion.
Yeah, me too. I do. I mean, does it, does it benefit or not benefit, like, your office any different?
Well, I mean, it's just a few more minutes of, of work trying to make a scheduling them, but that's not, that's not really an issue. I think the frustration is that when we do schedule them and we call and confirm, you know, at the last minute, oftentimes, they'll cancel, or for instance, like this evening, they, they do confirm, but nobody arrives. So, as long as the board knows we are doing our part, you know, in the office to, to schedule it, we are confirming it the day of. Can't do much more than that.
Right, okay.
All right, so we'll keep it the way it is then. As most of you are aware, we did have the mold situation in the basement, which we found in August. We were told that we needed to destroy and remove many of the older files. We received permission from Boston. Those have been destroyed. The letter is going out to Boston first thing in the morning. I'm working on that. The list of files is about six pages long, so I'm trying to condense that for Boston. We were informed that we will be covered for the remediation under our insurance policy. However, we will not be covered for rebuilding the file room. As you know, some of the, all of the wallboard was taken down, carpeting, et cetera. So, there is a contractor coming in later this week to do that, that work. Once that is done, we will move everything back into the file room so that the MIMO department can have their room back, but there is going to be a considerable amount of reorganization of the files, because when they did the cleaning work with the HEPA filters and whatever they did, they really destroyed any organization of the boxes of files that had been down there. So, that will likely not take place until the winter break in January, when we've got a couple of college students here who will be down there working on that. But we're just gonna put it back in the file room, and then in January, we'll spend time organizing that.
Are you okay with that?
Um, I would probably spend a great deal of time down there myself, as will Lisa, because they, they won't know one way or the other how to organize it, so they'll need some direction. But because we did eliminate so many of the files, I'm much more comfortable, you know, with the status of the rooms.
Okay.
Those two pallets are, that are all wrapped up. Is that stuff to be...
That's from my next topic, which we'll get to that. That's okay. And I just wanted to let the board know, the contractor that will be down there this week is also putting a vent in the door to help with circulation in that file room.
Okay.
We've also got a dehumidifier in there 24/7, which drains directly into the sump pump, which is in the closet behind it. So, that's, we are trying to eliminate any future mold issues. I think what had happened was that there is a sump pump in the room behind the file room. Unbenoits to me, that wasn't working. So, the eight years that I've been here, for all I know, that could, could not have been working for eight years. And I think that's, with a lot of the heavy rains we've had over the past decade, I think that's probably what caused the, the moisture issue down there. So, I think we'll be in good shape now. To Joe's point, the two big pallets outside, those contain the cleaning debris used to address the mercury spill that we just had last week here. We had a cleaning company come in and totally clean the office, the furniture, and eliminate any mercury toxins from the air and on the furniture. The carpeting was removed. I did hear back today from the insurance company, similar to the mold situation, we are covered for the removal and the cleanup, fortunately, but not for putting the office back together. So, we will have to foot the bill on a new carpet, but the majority of the cleanup, which was done by Clean Harbers, and any charges we get from the state for the hazmat team coming out will be covered by the insurance company. Since the Board of Health Office is taken apart, if you will, I decided that this would be a good time to, to give it a fresh paint job before a new carpet goes in. So, the office would be out of commission until probably the end of this week or early next week anyway, and the Secretary just happens to be going on vacation next week. So, it's really not going to affect, it might be a day or two that she would have worked, that she won't be able to now, but I think now's the perfect time to take advantage of the situation and give that room a fresh coat of paint and see if we can get the carpet installed prior to her return. Because of the, the mercury toxins in the air, my understanding is the piece of equipment or the instrument that caused that had been in the office for four to five years. So, per OSHA regulation, we do need to notify any and all employees who spent any considerable amount of time in that office. It's their right to know that they've been exposed to it and what the health risks are of that. So, I've determined 13 individuals who will be receiving a letter this week. The letters are going out tomorrow.
Okay.
And that's it for that. Just a quick update, they will be in Wednesday to finish the last round of testing, but the past couple of days, they've been non-detect.
Okay.
They've still, if you've been upstairs, it's still venting. They've got the ventilation going, but it's been non-detect for any, any mercury, so it's all clean. The classroom, which is the front room, the ceiling still is sagging, so I just ask anybody to avoid that room if at all possible. We prefer that you not go in there. We are working to get that repaired. The Millville Elementary School, Selectmen Wing and Reposer and I went to a meeting last week, which I think they'll probably discuss with the board later on the agenda, but I did want to let you know that there is a water test called an MPA, a Microscopic Particulate Test, that was discussed during that meeting that actually is going to take place tomorrow at the school, and it's a 24-hour test that needed to be done during the month of October, right after a rain event. So, Small Water Systems made the arrangements to conduct that tomorrow, and I have informed the elementary school and the principal that that will be taking place.
Okay.
We did receive word from the Governor's Office, they, that the Governor has approved the legislation with respect to the high school roof. So, we can now, we were delayed on the funding, but I did hear from the interim superintendent that the project is now estimated to go out to bid in the spring, and their hope is that the work will be done next summer on the roof.
Okay.
So, we thank Representative Kuros and Senator Moore for, for getting that through the Governor's Office for us. Class II licenses have gone out, the renewal applications have gone out for 2014. We had two that we sent out. The Highway Surveyor, I never did hear back from him with respect to a meeting with the board. I do not know the status of the Chapter 90 submittals. Although the Treasurer and Town Accountant have commenced the paperwork for the funding on the new dump truck, I do not know the status of the truck. I've asked for a repair or replacement to the gate or fence up at the elementary school. I know he was looking into that. I'm still waiting to hear back from that.
Okay.
And the last thing is I did put the sand out to bid, and we will be awarding that at the next meeting in October.
All right.
The animal control vehicle did go to BBT for an estimate, as the board requested. They will give me an estimate and let me know what the timeframe is on repair. I'm still waiting to hear back from them. The 175 Central Street issue, which was the earth removal issue.
Yep.
National Grid followed up that they do not have any additional issues with the earth being removed. It doesn't affect their tower there.
Okay.
So, I'm just waiting to hear back from the board's earth removal agent as to what his feeling is on the matter. Until I hear from the earth removal agent, there's really nothing else I could do. I would need to call a meeting of the Earth Removal Board, so that's kind of at a standstill. The Hope Street issue, we have ordered a gate that is currently being fabricated. Hopefully, will be installed within the next couple of weeks, and that's on the easement at 21 Hope Street. There had been concern a couple of weeks ago about a number of streetlights out in town. Those, we are told, have been all addressed by National Grid.
Okay.
We received a complaint from a resident that a tree fell on his car. I worked with the tree warden, and it was determined that that was not covered, it was not a town-owned tree, so not covered by our insurance company. So, our insurance company did decline that coverage for the resident. As the Chief, I think, has been in and mentioned briefly, PNW Railroad informed us that they weren't going to allow us access to the property at 181 Main Street behind the Mug Pub, because they're not allowing crossing the tracks. We have been in touch with Town Council. Town Council is waiting for some additional information from the Assessor's Office in order to provide a better response. And I'm told the Assessor's Office has finally forwarded that to Town Council, so I'm hoping we'll have a little more information on where the town, what the town's rights are with respect to that in the near future.
All right.
The bylaws are still with the Attorney General's Office. Those went in a little late, so normally, we'd hear from the AG's Office early November. I'm not expecting anything probably to work till the end of November.
Okay.
So, a lot of people have asked where the new bylaws are. Those are not available as yet. And the last thing is, we are working on with the Assistant Town Clerk, who is really a crackerjack on different software packages. She's working to create a permitting database for the town, based on something that the, the state does offer, free of charge. She's taken that and she's adopting that with the town's records and addresses, so she's been working on that. Our hope is that for January 1st, all departments in the Town Hall will have that permitting software. And that is all I have.
Great. Okay, old business. We have the MES water update. So, Jennifer, Joe, and Ellen went to a meeting with the EP in Worcester, and also with Small Water, and with Northeast Water. So, I'll let whoever would like to speak on it, on the meeting.
I'll speak. The, the bottom line here is, DEP is calling the shots. They, they came right out and told, "We're the policeman here." And the meeting concluded with five recommendations. The first one was to establish a, a new baseline for the system, to get the system... Actually, as part of that first recommendation was to do an MPA that Helen mentioned, and the timing is good, because we've had the rain event in 20... The only issue there is that those tests are labor expensive, intensive and expensive.
Right.
But required anyways at this time of year.
Every year, October 15th.
And it, and the MPA test comes right from the well, so you're testing it right as it comes out of the well. That's what they're testing.
Okay.
So, you know, so they're telling us, what are we getting? What are we dealing with? So, that is part of that.
And the problem is toxic organic chemical organisms.
Yeah.
Compounds, toxic TOCs.
Right.
And they showed us an aerial view of the, the area. There's a swamp right above the, the well.
All right, well, that could explain some.
The, but this is the first we've heard, I believe, of TOCs being present in the sampling, so that was a new kink in the...
All right.
Okay, the, after the MPA tests, DEP's recommending that the system be cleaned out, all the media taken out, and totally flushed out, and even going to the point it was suggested, I, I didn't think, I heard that it was in definite need, but even going to the extent of steam cleaning the, the system.
Bringing a water tank in from another source, testing it as it's coming out of their tank, to make sure the test at the end is the same.
Okay. Yeah, makes sense.
They, they also asked Bob Ferrari to look at reducing the cycle time between the alternating operation of the filter tanks. Their concern was that while one tank is inactive, it's probably, if it stays inactive too long, it might not be as effective.
Okay.
So, cut, actually, more cycles, less cycle time between the two cycles. And then, item four is that they asked for a recommendation or response to the question, how does the system go bad? And that's, I, I have a couple of opinions on that. Number one is that...
Who's asking that?
DEP.
They have actually offered a few, or one scenario which they thought was possible too, with the floaters from the tank still being in the media, thus never really backwashing out. So, that was there.
But Bob vehemently defended that, saying that... So, my, my opinion on that, or my conclusion, is that, number one, I question the fact that the right protocol or procedures were in place after the system was commissioned. And number two, and this is in all due respect to all town officials, but I, I think the town itself didn't provide the necessary oversight of the process. I think as a town, we need to be more involved on what's happening, what the readings are. And I personally come from a background where I was involved with processing fluids and, you know, it was done with statistical process control and control points. And I think that's the kind of thing that we have to institute in, in the oversight. So, the burden would fall on whoever the, the engineering and operators are, but, you know, we have to have that plan and those limits and those controls.
Okay.
And the protocol that keeps us in the loop.
All right.
So, I think with the, that test and the flushing of the system, then we can see where we are. So, there really is no Phase Two to it until we know what Phase One looks like at the end.
Okay.
The, it sounds to me as if the, the green sand filter would be acceptable, but there's question about another media being used, but I don't know enough about, about it to recommend anything else. And the final point was that eventually, and I don't understand what Chapter Six is, but DEPs are forcing the Chapter Six compliance after we get the, the system fixed, or the process fixed. But in the, in the interim, the DEP is amenable to make, trying to make things easier for the town to minimize or mitigate costs. So, we're going to work with the town on that.
Willing to forego some tests that they typically would require, but saying we're not using the water, that they may set up a schedule so that we don't have to submit to those tests, seeing that the water's not being used, only for flushing.
Right.
So, that will save some costs for us until it goes back into a drinking status, then we'll have to start submitting those tests.
Okay.
With the DEP. They couldn't guarantee it, but they were going to try.
Okay. All right.
Okay. That's all I have.
So we'll find out tomorrow or the next day what's going on.
Well, I think the test, once they do the test, as I understand it, it was like a twenty, twenty-four hour cycle, and it either went to Vermont or Pennsylvania, in which they... Or Jersey, somewhere, somewhere far away. Um, and they were going to do the testing.
And the samples have to fly.
So it'll be a few days, but really, probably a week before we have them.
Right.
We'll find out then.
Well, at least by next meeting, anyway, we'll have...
Yeah. And I, I don't know if this is the time or place to talk about it, but I think, um, you know, one of my concerns is, um, obviously we are, the engineer who installed it and our operator, as quid pro quo as they are, meetings is not working.
Right.
And I think we need to take some consideration into, not tonight, but in the future, who, who are we going to be using and what's going to, what to look like.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Definitely.
So, I think...
They're gonna be both on the same page.
You know, it...
Well, I think that, I think the relationship, that as quid pro quo as they're trying to make it look like, is a very hostile situation. And I don't think it's productive for our town, so we need to, we need to, um, decide which avenue we're going to go.
It's important that we're cognizant of this and, uh, but right now it's a critical time, so I wouldn't make any changes immediately.
Right.
While we get...
Down the road.
Once we get it.
One step at a time.
Right.
Yeah. I agree.
That's what I said, it's not a discussion.
We're gonna get our drinking status back. That's the first goal. Okay.
All right. Thank you for doing that.
Anything else? Yeah, thanks for going.
It was another fun three hours.
Yeah. I heard, I heard. So, um, anything else? Helen? Jen?
No.
Okay. So, all right, then one quick, chief, we got one quick old business, and then we'll do the, go back to the appointment.
That's fine.
Okay? All right, so, uh, back, last meeting of, uh, September sixteenth, we all approved a credit card policy for the town. While the, the bank, um, is, you know, would, would prefer a debit card. They, they feel it's a much better idea, uh, safer for the town. So, we just have to rescind our original, uh, motion, uh, for a credit card and change it to a debit. So the, the, the motion, I'll read it, and then if anybody would like to, uh, to, uh, make the motion, then we'll do as I read. So, it's to rescind the vote taken at the September sixteenth meeting approving a credit card policy and approve the debit card policy effective immediately. And we all got a copy of the debit card policy, which is, again, as the credit card policy, it's basically, uh, a carbon copy of pretty much most towns and cities in this, in the Commonwealth, so...
So moved, but I do have second, uh, question.
Okay.
Um, the, uh, did, would this preclude online purchases?
It would include, you would be able to use it.
So once, uh, you, you have the PIN number and the like, anyone could go online.
Well, not just anyone. Only a person who's authorized to use the card.
With the PIN number. You know, 'cause it'll be either a Visa or a MasterCard, right?
Correct, and I, I know, I'm sure Joe's question, uh...
Oh, it's a legit question, for sure.
Yeah, leads to, oftentimes, board members, such as finance committee members or selectmen members, are registering for a class or a seminar.
Right.
Um, if you would come to me, I could certainly log you, uh, register you that way with the card.
But, and, and of course, you can change your PIN number daily if you really want to, by the phone or online. So if there was an issue, we could definitely do that, so... Okay.
There's been a motion in a second.
So the motion in a second, any further discussion? Any other questions? All right, all in favor?
All right, you gave your second.
Yeah, they did. So all in favor? All right, all right. Okay, now we're gonna go back to appointments and resignations. And we have an appointment with the police department.
Thank you.
So we have, tonight we have, uh, Chief Ron Landry and, um, a candidate for a part-time police officer, uh, Daniel Melhouse. So, uh, welcome, and chief, please take the...
Good evening, thank you. Unfortunately, we have one, possibly two, police officers who may be leaving the town within the next couple of months. We see notifications of, uh, better opportunities, full-time jobs, one in the city of One Socket, and one in the department. So I credit them having the ability to find full-time service rather than part-time. So, having said that, obviously, I'll be short a couple of part-time police officers, which I drastically need to supplement my budget and my personnel. Uh, Dan Melhouse, uh, comes to us, um, from the Worcester Sheriff's Department. He's a sheriff for, for past eleven years. He's thirty-six years old, he lives in the town of Webster. Lovely wife, Brandon, and three children, or attendants. He has a, a passion for police work and police patrol. He's currently still seeking his degree in criminal justice. So I think he's a great asset, um, to the town in, in the near future with his training. He went to an FTO program and trained for another eighty hours. He spent a lot of time with us on his own, uh, performing ride along programs. So he's, we have a good idea what the town's like and, and what direction we go in. So I think he'd be a great candidate for us. I did attach his resume for your viewing. And I think, um, shows a good commitment, someone who's gonna be around for a while. Very seldom do we leave people because they don't like the town of Millville. They, they leave for better opportunities. And when I have a part-time, uh, finding a job at the full-time police officer, I'm certainly gonna wish him the best. And that's, that's the case we have going on right now. So, Dan, it will be much needed within the next couple of months. So I think, um, he'd be a great, great asset, so I'm looking for your support and his appointment as the next, uh, part-time police officer in town of Millville.
Chief, I have one question. Is that fifteen miles of rule in effect for part-time?
Uh, not so much part-time, I think, when you read the statute, he's, he's really a full-time personnel. But I think where he lives is even, is, is within the fifty miles, 'cause it says it crow flies.
As the crow flies.
Says it's crow flies, it's not by miles. So, a straight arrow would be within fifty miles. So, I'm questioning, but it says it crow flies.
I'm impressed with the resume and...
Yeah. It, you know what, it's, it's really a credit to the town of Millville when we can attract, uh, qualified people like we do. And we don't have to look for people with no experience and suddenly just wanna be a police officer for really no other reason than it looks good maybe. So I, if it's spread to the town, though, we have this opportunity to find people like Dan. And the other people that we have, they're pretty, pretty good to bother. So, uh, it's a credit to everybody here.
Great.
I'll lift a motion to approve Daniel Melhouse as part-time police officer.
I'll start in there.
And Mr. Chairman, this would be through June thirtieth, two thousand thirteen, I'm sorry, two thousand fourteen, at which time he'd be up for reappointment.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion, questions? Okay, um, all in favor? All right, all right. Welcome.
Congratulations, thank you.
Yeah, Joe, it's customary, come on, say a few words. Good thing.
I was expecting you to see the town clerk and come in and help give you a...
Thank you. I just wanna say thank you, appreciate the opportunity. Looking forward, I've been riding around with the guys for a while now. So I'm definitely looking forward to, uh, spending some more time with them. You know, serving the community of Millville.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. For the parking, right? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Okay, so, we have new business. We have a statement of claim on thirty, excuse me, thirty-seven Central Street. As, as you know, the thirty-seven Central Street was securely boarded at the town's expense. Uh, in order for the town to recover the costs associated with the work, we must file the attached, the attached statement of claim with the Worcester County Registry of Deeds so that the lien is attached to the property. The cost of the work was nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, and the cost to file the document is seventy-five, so please vote this out. So, um, looking for a motion?
I'll make the motion to, uh, file and incur the expense of twenty thousand fifty dollars. I'll second that motion.
Okay.
All in favor?
All right, all right. All right.
There are five lines right on there for each of your signatures.
Okay. Next, we have, um, a special one-day liquor license. Excuse me one second. And, uh, we have, oop. So it's for, the applicant's name is Joseph Sheehan. Um, and it's at the Polish American Citizens Club, uh, thirty-seven Ironstone Street. It's for fundraising, uh, uh, for, for post four-eleven on October nineteenth, two thousand thirteen, and it'll be from ten AM to five PM. Um, is this gonna be indoors or out in the...
This is outdoors. They already have an indoor license. The only reason why we do these special ones is strictly for the outdoor portion of it.
All right, yeah, 'cause I was kinda wondering, 'cause I know there's a liquor license already there, so... All right, so it's for a private party, basically outside on the grounds. Okay.
Motion to approve.
And did they run through the chief with this?
Yep, the chief has signed, um, the application, and the applicant has asked the board to waive the thirty-five dollar fee because it is for a charitable cause.
Okay.
Is there business hours, ten AM? Business hours? So the event, this, looking for a special license. What's their liquor license? Is there liquor license twelve? 'Cause they're asking for ten AM, and we're gonna have...
I would have to pull the file to see what they're...
I don't know what they are, what's the business.
What are you saying, they're doing both at the same time?
No, but if your indoor license doesn't start till twelve.
Yeah, I don't think it matters. This particular license would be completely separate from their...
Separate from...
Yeah. In fact, under Mass General Law, if you look at the regulation, the statute reads that any, um, businesses that actually have annual liquor licenses in a town wouldn't apply for one day. This is an unusual situation because it's for outdoor, and they're not authorized on the outdoor por- portion on their annuals, so...
Okay.
This would be completely separate from that.
All right.
Okay. Motion to approve one-day liquor license?
Second.
All in favor? All right, all right.
And to waive the fee, is that...
Yeah, and, and waive the fee. As written, right?
As written.
It has written. Now, we have the, uh, rock salt bid. Uh, there, the bid results were, uh, for two thousand thirteen, fourteen winter season. Eastern Minerals is the low bidder for forty-nine dollars a ton. And, uh, last year's price was forty-nine, forty-eight per ton, uh, also through Eastern Minerals. So, to, uh, I'm looking for a motion to award the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen rock salt bid to Eastern Minerals for forty-nine dollars per ton, delivered and picked up in accordance with the bids received by the town of Shrew, of Shrewsbury.
So, I have a question before we go any further with this.
Yeah.
From the past, um, with this rock salt, this and that, did anybody test this? Because the last time that this happened with this, John Dean tested it and found a lot of dirt in the salt.
That was, that was in the sand.
That was sand.
Well, whatever.
It was clay in the sand.
Right, did anybody check this to make sure?
This is rock salt only.
That's what I'm asking.
Yes, it's, uh, it's the consortium bid with Shrewsbury, and they do have very specific guidelines on the salt and what it has to mean. The criteria that it has to be.
I just want that being said out loud.
That's in their bid packet.
Yep.
Eighteen, eighteen committees.
Just making sure.
Second.
All in favor? All right. All right, and then we're looking to close the special town meeting warrant.
Did everyone who wanted to submit something, submit it?
Um, for the most part, I have a couple of placeholders. The planning board has two they're voting on tonight.
Okay.
So I am aware of them. Um, I'm aware of one other that the chief has told me about that has been place marked. Um, but to my knowledge, those are the, the only three that I don't physically have that we will accept.
Okay.
Is that, is that one for the police department? Is that, uh, depending on what happens with P and W?
No, I've got nothing to do with that.
Independent?
I thought the, uh, the council on aging was hoping to...
I already have theirs.
You got theirs?
Yep.
Okay. For the van?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure, go ahead. All right. Um, okay, so, other than that, uh, motion to close the warrant.
So, someone, second.
All in favor, and that is for the two thousand thirteen special, uh, town meeting warrants. All right? All right. Members, a members forum, anybody?
I have something. I was, uh, fortunate enough to attend the MSA, uh, meeting in, in Franklin on Saturday. And, uh, there were a couple of interesting takeaways. And I'm just gonna highlight some of them. One thing that, uh, when they gave, uh, presented a legislative update, they mentioned chapter ninety and the Commonwealth's commitment to improving town infra- infrastructure. And I just wanna make it known, at this time in chapter ninety of the town of Millville, we've got about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the bubble. And that's a whole lot of money for a small town like this.
Yep.
So we've got, you know, we've got to address that situation, of course, Haysley, I think, in my opinion.
That's a, that's a tough one to address.
I spoke to him. I told him the urgency and the willingness, you know, for anyone to help.
What kind of a, uh, responses you get, if I may ask?
I, I couldn't comment one way or the other. I honestly don't remember.
Okay.
I just made, I just made sure that that was a, a big concern of ours.
Okay. So you did say that there is help if he needs...
Yep.
'Cause I know he's busy.
Mm-hmm.
And we all have full-time jobs, too.
Yes, no, I know.
So, it's understandable, but, but reach out for help if you need it.
I can, I can try another contact.
Okay.
And see what we can do.
All right.
This, this might interest the chief, that the two rock stars at that meeting was, uh, Dan Minsky, uh, superintendent in chief, Boston Police Department, and, uh, Ed, uh, DuVoe. And they, uh, discussed the aftermath of the, uh, Marathon bombings and basically how that related. They, they emphasized training and, uh, interdepartmental cooperation. And it was pretty impressive what they, they accomplished in Boston in that, uh, they had incident command within eight minutes at the site. And everyone that needed medical attention had it in twenty-two minutes. And everyone that had, you know, critical, uh, injuries in the hospital in twenty-two minutes. But, the, uh, the thing is that, uh, you know, they recognize that it's expensive to do the level of training, uh, to accomplish that and how that would affect the town. But in this, in this case, it, you know, it paid off for them. Um, Boston was involved with nine other towns. They participated in, in this, acted, uh, with that problem. Uh, and, uh, a water town being a smaller town, you're in a... And Water Town being a smaller town, they're in a, they have an agreement with 50 other communities. So when that carjacking took place, Chief DuVoy had immediate assistance there. And initially, you know, they didn't, they didn't know what the situation really was. When it started, it was just an ordinary carjacking. But he talked about, you know, involvement in the law enforcement council, 50 communities. And the other, there are two other things that really get my interest in is, and I've, you know, talking with people at Sutton and other select boards on the subject of setting goals for the town. It seems like there are a whole lot of select boards that annually in June set goals. The moderator of that section indicated that, you know, you really don't, can't set a course unless you have a goal. And, you know, he strongly recommended that. And the other thing was capital planning. And Arlington had a tremendous, they have a great program to, to fund capital project and capital need. And basically, they, from various sources, they budget annually 5% of their operating budget, and they manage it so that it's constant, and there's a great deal of participation. The thing is, you know, they roll it every, every fi, every year, about five years, and they define a capital project, anything, at $3,000 or more. And it's going to be tangible, it's going to be lasting. So I have, I have, you know, if you're interested in that information, I can share the information I received on it, and we could talk about it. And it sounded like a good idea to me that the board set, you know, maybe in June, a goals.
Okay.
And that there's help within the MMA for guidance for those kinds of things.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, before we go to a final public forum, we'll listen to Parks and Rec. Did you want to speak on that, or no?
Were you, I, I think it was a different member, a committee member that was supposed to be here for that, so if you're not prepared, you certainly...
All right. Nope, we, we didn't know if that's other reason you were here?
No.
All right. Okay, so we'll table that till we can reschedule as well. So, all right, so final public forum. Nobody?
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Our next regular meeting will be Monday, October 21st, 2013, at 7:00 PM, Longfellow Municipal Center, and a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? All right.
The one document I didn't bring with me the other time was the actual one-day, the licenses. So if you could just wait one minute?
Okay.
Get it out real quick.
And I was a good attendant on Saturday that the council on aging is...
Oh, you did? Oh, good.